Yes.
I'd like to call the meeting, call the order, the regular meeting, the recreation park commission meeting of Tuesday, May 2, twenty twenty three. Would I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Chair Joseph Harris.
President.
Commissioner Enrique Ortiz. Commissioner Emily Gilling. Commissioner Michael Jimenez. Commissioner Trevor Linderson. Do we know? Is Michael okay? I feel like he hasn't missed so far and he didn't say anything to me.
He didn't say anything in the text message. Do you want me to text him or what? Sorry.
The official bounty hunter.
And thank you for having me here.
Sorry, let me send this text message really quick.
Yes.
Reese, so we're having Rick.
Yes.
Well, shall we conclude her, right?
Okay, that's interesting.
As we said.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and just as all.
Move to item number three, the community participation forum, and at this time, I don't see anybody present. But we'll move to item number four, which is a consent calendar. The following items are presented to commit to the approval without discussion of a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. Should a member of the recreation park commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion of approval and considered as a separate item. Item A, approve the minutes of the recreation parks and recreation commission meeting of April 4th, twenty twenty three. We're looking for a motion approval. Emotion. We have emotion in a second.
On second.
Motion is second, all will approve.
Aye.
Prove it. Moving down to regular business. Elevated water tank artwork.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me without talk?
Could you use a mic? I know, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk to you about painting the elevated tank. Um, and I'm painting public art on the elevated water tank is a required element of the state parks grant that was given to the city as part of the Central Park renovation project. So I'm talking to you today. After this, I'll be following up with a report to city council on May 9th to discuss this as well. Uh, the elevated tank is in need of coating maintenance that was identified not only in a report done in two thousand eighteen, but another one that was done in twenty twenty one. Apparently, the coating didn't fix itself between those two reports, so it it still needs to be done. I, the staff went out to bid to complete the project back in twenty twenty, and the bids ranged from four hundred and thirty thousand dollars rounded to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and one point six million dollars. So it's not cheap to paint a tank. Just repainting it the way it is is going to cost at least half a million dollars. At the time, city council rejected all bids on the basis of the fact that the tank is not required for water storage, and we didn't have funding in the water fund in order to do that time, and it wasn't programmed uh into the rates at that time. Now, since then, we programmed two hundred thousand dollars into the water fund in the utility rates in order to have some funding associated with this project. Uh, artwork being considered for the tank is in front of you. The artwork minutes, the artwork that is already on the electric bus, which is manufactured, that's a picture of the actual bus. Uh, it is currently in North Carolina being babysat because we don't have the charging for it. It will be here in August. So what we did was we said, okay, well, what if we followed the same branding? Um, so uh, this is consistent with the image you provided on the bus. Um, what I've done is I've sent an email off to our uh project manager, the one who's overseeing the grant, asking if something like this would constitute public art. Does this meet the requirement? I sent that email two days ago and I have yet to hear from him. That's discouraging. I will ping him again in order to see if this constitutes public art. We don't know that it doesn't.
Like, we could break.
No kidding. All right.
I like, it's a great idea.
So one of the issues we have with that tank are the antennas. Okay, back in two thousand twelve, we signed a forty year lease agreement with AP Wireless, and it gives the city very few rights as far as those antennas go. We will probably have to pay to relocate them during the time that the coating is done. Uh, cause um, and and in addition, those leases require that we maintain the tank in good working order. So uh, that kind of puts us in a little bit of a bind. The attorney that I'm working with, because he does projects like this for other jurisdictions, estimates it's going to cost about seventy thousand dollars per antenna company, which is probably going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to the cost of coating the tank itself. The Central Park renovation project, fifty percent engineers estimate for the elements that include uh, the climbing structure, the landing pad and public art, public art on the water tower. They just bundled it all together, was estimated at nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars and change. This amount has already been incorporated into the project budget, so it's it's already got earmarked. So when we look at the overall budget, which does actually meet requirements and is within the funding, that's already in there, so a five million dollar project, about a fifth of it is just for those elements and the lion's share of that is the uh artwork on the tank, you know, that'd be expensive. All right. Although the water tank is still not required for water storage, because back in two thousand seventeen, they built that second tank over at the Ovispa Yard. Once that tank was built and the backup, the dis- generator for the booster pumps, this tank isn't needed for water storage, right? It only offers about an hour's worth of water if everything fell apart, right? So it's it's, um, and we can provide that backup service with the facilities that we have at three oh three Ovispa. Even though it's not required, it's still being used as such, and therefore it is still appropriate for some water funds to be applied to maintenance of the facility. So the application of this two hundred thousand dollars that were programmed into the water fund into utility rates can be applied along with the uh nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars that's been budgeted into the um, the the budget for the renovation project. So if you add those two together, I can't do nothing again, it's one point one two four, right? One point one million dollars. This uh may be sufficient to accomplish both the base coding, remember, we went out to bid and the low bid was four hundred and thirty thousand, as well as the public art, if this is what the public art is, if this is what the public art is, it's fairly straightforward. We're not talking about some really complicated, we might be able to get this to a, you know, regular painter and have such artwork applied. Uh, maybe sufficient to accomplish both of those, as well as the cost to temporarily move the antennas to be able to complete the work. The temporary relocation of the tower, of the antennas is a pain in the neck. Uh, we'd be interested in moving forward with doing that portion of the project prior to going out to bid for the construction of renovation project, because the temporary location would probably be on that site. So let's get it done. By the way, I do want to point out that this tank was built in two thousand eight. In ten years, it already needed coating work. Okay. So if we do code it this year, in twenty thirty three, we're going to be back in this exact same position, and we will still have a lease that requires that we maintain the tank in good working order. Which are probably in the coding, anyway, just.
And the question about the antennas, what is the city getting from that? Is it like finance? Is it better cell service? Like, what? I'm guessing they, I already know the answer, but I'm asking the question. And then is there an option to terminate that would be more financially advantageous than going down this route of forty years?
Uh, that is a fantastic question, okay. Uh, back when the lease was originally um signed in two thousand twelve, the city was in very bad financial strength. We were getting about a hundred thousand dollars a year through the lease agreements that existed, there were four or five lease agreements. What happened was they all got bundled into this one. The company, AP Wireless, basically gave the city two hundred thousand dollars a year over the course of two years. So we got about four hundred thousand. And then past that, we were given fifty percent of revenue. In the beginning, that was maybe twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Now it's like somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars a year. When you do the math, we're not getting the whatever forty times a hundred thousand is. We're not getting the four million, or the four million dollars. Please answer your question.
Is the lease written in a way that there is a termination clause, that there'd be a financial component to it?
Uh, that's why I hired the attorney. Um, I had the attorney look at the lease agreement with AP Wireless as well as, interestingly, the underlying agreements with the original antenna holders didn't go away. So we have to look at all of them. It is it is, it is perfect. It is, it is, it is really bad. Um, I've had them, so I'm asking them to review the revenue if there's any way. Um, one of the interesting elements of this is part of it has to do with who owns the um underlying lease agreements. And when they shifted over from whatever we had to now like T-Mobile and Sprint, T-Mobile and Sprint don't have the same revenue streams. And since we had no say on that, the revenue stream probably would have gone down anyway. But it's very complicated and it is very discouraging. So what the attorney is recommending that we do now? I should have the letter. It's um, I drafted a letter and I'm, go by the attorneys, um, which basically asks AP Wireless to come to the table and work with us on what is going to be involved with moving the antennas. The agreement says that we have to keep the tank in good working order. What that means is interesting. When you take out the eighty, is it eighty tons of water from the tank, does it change the structural integrity of the tank? Also, structural um calculations were done back in two thousand ten, I think, for the antennas that were on there, and I don't think a new structural system has been done for antennas that have been added. So I plan on bringing that up when we, when we come to the table, because that's interesting. At this point, they need it more than we do. But if you look at every logo, every, you know, was it state logo for, or sorry, city logo, the water tower is in it. From a cultural icon, it's more to us as a cultural icon than it is as a water tower. But I don't know if removing the water is going to make things better or worse from an antenna standpoint. The reason why that's interesting is because perhaps there's some interesting negotiation that can occur with the leaseholder about temporarily relocating that, because they have more interest in the tank being properly coded than you do. This, it it becomes an interesting discussion and kind of where it might be best for us to be, so. After May ninth, after I have this discussion with you, I want to add what your thoughts are into the staff report, which I'm reading this, which is draft staff report that I wrote for city council, is once I add your element to it, and we have this discussion at city council, is to then send that letter to AP Wireless saying, come to the table, let's have a discussion about what we're going to do and how this is going to happen. And I'll be asking for council's direction on how they want that to happen. All right. So if city council is interested in pursuing its work, it's recommended that it be bid up for construction in the very near future, like this summer. So relocation of the antennas and scaffolding for the elevated tank work do not interfere with the Central Park renovation project. In addition, these staff will need to engage with the owner of the cell tower agreement to facilitate the work necessary to address the existing antennas as they are impediments to the coding work. So I will have attached a draft letter, I'm sorry, I should have brought it. Right, the fiscal impact. Combination of the program funds and the grant funding allocated to public art on the water tower should be sufficient, should be now, for to afford there, be sufficient to complete this project. If council recommends proceeding, the funds will be budgeted in the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. The water fund cash balance right now is two point six eight million dollars, and so we can easily accommodate the project. If that's the direction we choose to go in. So the big unknowns now are, how much is it really going to cost? And really, ways to really know that is to, you know, sit at the table with with AP Wireless and to go out and bid on the project. And I've rejected them before, and for some reason, we find out that's not doable. But we do have a grant requirement that says we're going to put public art on the tower. And then the other unknown that we have is, will the um, will the the grant manager accept this as public art? And does, does the recommission and re- and city council accept this is what our artwork is going to look like? It does meet with the theme of the rest of the park, which is dunes, so the coloring meets it. And and the lovely part is if we're branding ourselves, it's really interesting to have the branding of the bus be the same as the branding of the water tower as far as as who we are. So I open up to your thoughts and questions on this matter.
So I think on the cellphone or on the antenna component, there's been a lot of technology changes over the last ten years, and so I, do you feel like we are in a position of power with AP Wireless that their technology is probably legacy anyway? And everything just like satellite dishes and stuff is getting smaller? So I think it's good we're going that route to have that conversation with them. I would be curious, but I wouldn't want to read it, but I would just say like on, I'm sure the lawyers already looked at it, but did we agree to these specific antennas on the tower? Or was it, we will provide the real estate for these antennas? And would they be open to relocate to somewhere else within the city?
Yeah, okay, so one, so yeah, that was a multifaceted question, so let's see if I my wheels are turning, I'm like I will tell you, this is hard. This, this, this is hard. This is just my part.
Yeah.
Um, we're working with just a horrible agreement that was done when the city was under duress.
Yeah.
And we're carrying it now, and and the interesting thing is the attorney says, we're not alone. Um, there are lots, I mean, the cell tower companies have lots of lawyers, and they have reasons to pepper things throughout, and, you know, I'm not gonna say pray, that's a mean word, but, you know, to um maybe used it to their advantage that cities didn't know what they were doing. Um, and now we know better, but that doesn't do us a whole lot of a lot of good when we have to wait until, you know, uh, twenty forty two, twenty fifty two, before, I know.
Still be here going.
So, so what's the thing? So I've had some lengthy conversations, very expensive, lengthy conversations, with the attorney to talk about options such as, what if we provided another structure? What if it isn't a water tower? What if it's a tree? Uh huh, right? What if we had it another location? Now, the problem is, and I have a problem, not opportunity, I don't know. Uh, but when we come to the table with AP Wireless, you know, I'm willing to to lay the cards out and say, hey, you know what? Maybe on the water tower isn't the best idea, because we're going to be back here again in ten years.
Yeah.
And 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 you know what? This is going to be a pain in the neck for all of us.
Yeah.
So so what if we do explore a different agreement? What if we do renegotiate something where that tower is, or the 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 antennas are at Packle Park, say? You know, and it's a tree instead of a water tower? Yeah, let us have our cultural icon unimpeded by ugly antennas where we don't have to worry about whether or not they're there, and we can paint it to our heart's content, whatever. And you know what? The only way we're going to know that is to have that discussion. And that's why the first step is that letter sent to them that says, eh, within thirty days, we're going to meet, we're going to hash this out. So some of that is, you know, asking council for the direction to allow me to embark on that and say, hey, you know, the uni- I I was talking about the universe of ideas. Let's talk about the universe of ideas and and see what makes the most sense for us, not just for this project at this time, but because we're going to be here three more times before that lease is over. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think that's really like, that would be at least my recommendation, is if we could keep the spirit of offering the service, AP Wireless would win because they'd be able to upgrade legacy equipment and really, I mean, we're saying we'll take it down, all that equipment, but then I would think they would want to grow their revenue streams if it could be potentially in an area that would improve their cell service capabilities from when that was initially assessed ten years ago. So that would be my direction is try to get them to agree.
Yeah. I I do want you to um also temper expectations, because this lease agreement is, oh, so in their favor. But they might have no interest in in exploring renegotiation, where they might be willing, in order to hold on to this particular agreement, they might be willing to locate, you know, temporarily relocate on their day. Because, you know, get force in the mouth, they might, they they might see this as being, hey, we don't want to lose this, but we're not going to know that until we sit down with them and start having that conversation. It it's gonna, it's gonna be a very interesting conversation, but one that's that's worth having at this time. So it sounds like you are in favor with this kind of direction that I'm, I'm also somewhat recommending. Okay, then the other element is, how do you feel about this artwork? Okay.
The only thing I might change is just the top where it says City of Guadalupe, maybe change it to a font that's a little bit more just that only where it's more readable as you're driving into town.
Uh, I I I present this more, I present this more as a concept drawing, rather than a finished product, as a, um, do we, do we feel like this is something where we want to go out to the public and like people, you know, put in their um, their vote on what it needs, and and the 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 challenge we have with that is that we're a little bit pressed for time, and so i- if we were to go through that process, it would really make it more challenging to be able to take advantage of the fact that the construction hasn't started. If we're going to go through that process, we might run into a deadline problem with construction of the site itself. So that's why I'm hoping that we can get, you know, buy-in on this look.
I think so, especially when the bus gets in town and, yeah, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna get
I like that it matches the bus, and then I do think that this is in line with like our expectations match our budget, and I think if we put that out to the public, their expectations might not be what we can afford, you know, like really detailed and stuff like that, that we just can't do on the water tower, so. And I like that it matches the bus.
Because we all had expectations, expectations should live, in reality.
Yeah.
For one.
And and one of the things, so I I have that, I did talk to a painting contractor to ask the question of, if you're just painting it, so look the way it is, how many days? Because I needed to let, eh, you know, the AP Wireless have an idea about how long the temporary relocation would be, and he said sixty days. Uh, the time is mostly in the prep work, there's a lot of prep work that needs to be done. So what I did was I assumed another thirty days to do the artwork, and so if you add that up, it's ninety days. So in my draft letter, I'm putting in, eh, you know, estimated ninety days for the project to occur. So, okay, um, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Will you be taking the meeting?
Uh, it 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 will be available, because all of them are streamed, so the the meeting.
They're all on YouTube, so the way that we're doing ours right now is the same way that city council does theirs too.
Oh, the meeting with the lawyers.
Oh, AP Wireless, oh.
Probably close for a journey work.
That would be nice, sir. That's the comment I'm talking about. Yes. We'll hook you up with some equipment, entertain you.
Put some ear in your ear.
No, I'm, I'm, it's, it's this is a bit of a challenge, but um, if we succeed in this, I think that we're, we're going to really be able to showcase a cultural icon and figure out how to keep it while, you know, maintaining our obligations and good relationships.
You, you have the commission's blessings.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you for your time, thank you for your questions and for your input, and um, wishing luck.
Good luck.
I appreciate your time, thanks.
We were worried about you, because we're like, he never late, he never
Right before he was about to climb, I was like, does anybody know if Michael's okay? I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Uh, I have a review number six. What are the girls' monthly update? Yeah, you're significant, good to see you. I saw Rego the other night. That's what.
I think he will up. On there, please.
Um, okay, so our current event, we had spring break at the club, and it was really, I wasn't there, but Daisy was. Um, we had about eighty kids daily. Um, it was really busy. Uh, we did a lot of activities like steam, uh, and tiny robots, which is like kind of coating, um, drones that were from Mackenzie, we had like a cooking class that involved, it was just like cold cooking, like ants on a log, little doing little hours with rice cakes. Um, we also did pottery and arts and crafts. We are expecting more kids for summer, so eighty was was kind of like, it was okay, you know, we're I could, we're expecting anywhere between a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids for summer. Um, we partnered up with the Guadalupe Union School District, and they actually paid for all of the kids to attend, they also provided breakfast and lunch. It'll be something similar for summer, except they're only paying four weeks, which is also the four weeks that summer school will be happening. And then after that, that's when we need to figure out what we're going to do. Well, I'm sure we'll still be open, but the cost will be different. Um, the school also provided transportation morning and afternoon, and um, I believe summer would also be similar. Um, and then our, what we're working on is, like I said, summer, that's a big one. And the facility use, it's still the same, just Mackenzie Restine, the Bull Dogs, the Women and Infant Mobile Care, and we'll be having a teen night in June, not May, June. Um, the building is looking good. Uh, we communicated with Hannah, there was a couple weeks I needed to be pulled out, but we take care of that. And I think we're doing a decent job communicating anything that's wrong, can't let us know, and vice versa. Any questions?
I've been out there, I have some transportation guys. Glad to hear that you're going good, I wanted to get down there from a distance. I just glad to know that things are going good.
What was the feedback from the parents? Were they really happy to have that resource back in the community and excited for summer?
I think so, I think the kids were the most excited, um, because they, they don't know we're out there, they're like, why can't we be out here? They ask where Daisy's at all the time now, they're like, where's Daisy? And um, we have heard a lot of parents like, what's going on for summer? And everything is not finalized, finalized yet, so it hasn't been really um uh advertised, just because the MOU hasn't been signed with the city yet, with the school yet, so we're still working out a couple things. But yeah, like I had a parent today ask, what's going on with summer, like, it won't be there, just maybe by next week.
Sounds good. I have a question. I know when COVID hit, a lot of the kids in the school district all over the country had fallen down, fallen back in terms of their academic progress. Is there any summer programs that you guys can address any of that to help these kids? Because you know, when summer hits again, kids don't do much by way of, you know, academics. Are you folks going to concentrate on any of that? I know it's kind of fun time for the kids, but at the same time.
Are you folks gonna concentrate on any of that? I know it's kinda fun time for the kids, but at the same time.
With the school district, since we partner up with them, we do, they do require us to do an academic portion. And they actually bring the Chromebooks from school, like for spring break, we had Chromebooks from school. Out there and they worked on their academic portion at the club, so we we do.
So that will continue in the summer?
Yeah, and a lot of what the school focuses on right now is reading, just we, um so uh what we do most of it is reading. We're piloting a program out for them, um and we'll probably do that in the summer as also.
I encourage it.
Yeah.
Thank you, anybody, any other questions or comments? We thank you again for your report, congratulations, make sure things are going good. Thank you.
Oh yeah, sorry, I didn't.
Right now, we're moving to item number seven, a grant for Jack O'Connell Park Field.
So for this one, um it's kind of me taking off my hat as a commissioner and really speaking more as. For community member and then also involvement with the Bulldogs. So we were, I attended the um RERC rec meeting, um planning meeting, uh I guess has that almost. Couple weeks ago now, and so there was a lot of things that came out of that meeting that we were talking about and. Overarching, there's several very specific goals that are in different lines of effort, but overall, one of the big things that was a takeaway was. That we really wanna increase opportunities for youth specifically in sports. And so there was a survey done that looked specifically at Mackenzie. And they surveyed, I think it was two hundred and fifty some odd students, asking them what type of recreation do they want in the local community? And kind of paraphrasing how that survey came to be, what they're really looking for is soccer and then um football as well. And so one of the things we're always up against is the current state of Jack O'Connell. The Bulldogs do an incredible job, the city does an incredible job of trying to maintain that, but there's never gonna be. A time where any amount of effort is going to stack up against the gophers or whatever um species is living under the ground there. Ground squirrels, whatever it is. Um so after that meeting, I really um started looking at what are our options in order to potentially bring. Turf to that field, which would be at Jack O'Connell, and what does that look like financially? So um running a cost estimate, there's various different um variables that would have to be taken into consideration to get a true estimate. Um but we could in theory put all turf over there for less than a million dollars. If we're looking at a cost comparison of what Long Poak did recently. Um so they would be our most closest comparison, cause they opened in twenty twenty and that has um stadium seats. It has um, what's that gym that's there, or like an outdoor agility thing, also a track all the way around it. Um, there's several things that we could do something very similar to that. And then also I ran some rough number estimates, looking at what it would cost currently to water. And just looking at the amount of grass that's there with current water rates, I estimated we're spending at least twenty five thousand dollars a year. Just on grass and then you add in the cost of labor and a lot of other variables, it costs a lot of money to maintain that space. And so the reason why I wanted to start talking about it here is that there's a lot of grant money that's out there currently. It was a big initiative that came on after COVID, talking about um not only making recreation and parks more accessible. But how do we align that with doing things that are gonna be better for the environment as well and reducing water? And then also long-term sustainability of these. And in my initial research, there is quite a few grants that we currently would qualify for, looking at this as an opportunity. But the reason I wanted to bring it up now versus kind of waiting, uh you know, a couple years down the road. The things that make us very desirable to grants, I feel like in the next like three to five years, as Pasadena continues to build out. It is gonna move up our household income and some other things that are not gonna stay, that the need in our community is gonna go away. I think it's still very much is going to be here, but I think that the ability to access funds in the way that we currently can is gonna look different in a couple of years from now. So I wanted to bring it to the commission first and really what I would be asking is, is this something that we wanna explore? And then the second part of that would have to be taking it to city council, um asking if this is something that they're willing to support. And then the next stage of that would have to be going to ultimately Los Amigos more than likely. Because um while I'm willing to do the analysis and write the grant and on the behalf of, you know, really um. Our program, I would have to have a vehicle in order to submit, because I'm not a nonprofit myself. I'd just be willing to donate my time to put that together, so that's kind of what I'm asking for right now, is this something we support? Would we wanna move this forward to city council and then any concerns that anybody has on behalf of looking at this as a potential option? Because in addition to the recreation component, um there's also a lot of business um that we could generate as well. From potentially renting out that space for tournaments, um things like, you know, the um soccer tournaments, football tournaments. Um five K um like Cancer Society runs, other awareness runs that are out there as well.
Other football games there.
Yeah, so there's a lot of revenue that could bring people to town to patronize our businesses as well, so. That's enough about what I've looked at, I just wanna hear your guys' thoughts and let me know if this is something we might be interested in.
I I have a question regarding um, you said that. Uh Los Amigos is, Los Amigos. It would be the nonprofit that would apply for it, because the city can't do it?
Most of the grants that I've seen require a nonprofit to be your submitting entity. So it would have to be an MO, and it doesn't have to be Los Amigos, it's just the one that I guess I'm most familiar with, um but it. The grants that are out there require a nonprofit to submit, but it would have to be like kinda how we've been doing the parks where Los Amigos is submitting. And then the city is ultimately saying, yes, you can use the real estate.
Oh, I see.
Is that kinda how it's been going, Hannah? Okay.
But. But they wouldn't uh be the administrators of the grant, the city, it would be Los Amigos.
Unless we have another nonprofit that would be willing to work with me.
Which like you said, we already have a lot of experience doing that with them, because of the grants that they've already been writing for us.
Sure, I I think it's a great idea, um in the big picture, I don't think that's a lot of money, really. You know, uh particularly if it's gonna save in the long run and make that feel use.
It'd make it beautiful, right?
Yes, I'm just concerned about the upkeep of that, though, I'm not sure how that works, but I'm sure are you, you're gonna continue to do more research, I imagine.
So I did an initial trend analysis, looking at where would we come to a break even point? Because we would have to be looking at beyond the turf's initial lifespan, would the city be willing to continue to take that on? So I would have to work a little bit more closely with Hannah and Shannon in order to get the actual numbers. But the trend analysis that I'm looking at is water costs, maintenance costs, um potential revenue sources and then trending. There's also um a tax rebate in the state of California, when you rip um regular grass out, you actually. And replace it with turf, you actually get a per square foot um tax incentive as well. So um even looking at what we would save, we would save almost two times the amount that we're currently spending. So we would recoup the money within six years and it would become profitable in theory to the city within um ten.
At this point, do you have a vision as to what it might look like in your own mind, I mean, you know, obviously. Oh, yeah.
I don't, I mean, I like, until I started coaching football, like I've never even watched a full football game before, so I don't have a lot of experience, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh uh references from uh War Memorial Stadium, you remember the War Memorial Stadium, Passover Bowl? It's a, it's a stadium that's, it's, it's, I think the, I believe the city owns it, I'm not sure. But um they they led the youth, the uh uh youth football unit and high school. Yeah, it's not, it's nothing to do with the high school, yeah.
Right, so um. So but it's almost, cause I can, I can envision a high school.
It looks like a high school stadium, it looks.
It would be incredible, because then you would have a a track around it.
That one doesn't have a track, but we could put a track.
Yeah, cause then it'd be, you know.
Well, like the one in Long Poak has a track around it, so that one is actually, everyone thinks it's owned by Long Poak High School, that one's actually owned by the city in Long Poak. And so um I have the contact information for the gentleman who kind of ran that whole program. It took them quite a few years to get it up and running. Um but I think there's things in our favor that weren't in Long Poak's favor at that time as well, that would help us move. Um potentially at a, like they had a a lot more barriers to getting things up, but I think that the funding is what everyone always thinks is like. That's gonna be your barrier, but the barrier is really the land, when you pull back, like what is the like, like the different layers on there is like. Can we get the city to say that they would support this initiative? And as far as cost goes, like there would have to be some level of city oversight on. Um the turf and things like that, but. When you add up all the stuff they're currently paying for, I still think the city would come out significantly ahead. Yeah.
That's definitely not taking into consideration how many times we have to have the plumbers come out there. Or not even plumbers, but the irrigation system, we always have breaks in the line and. We have to dig, bring a backhoe out there, dig it up, figure out where even the spot is at that it's leaking. Um, that would be so much better.
Yeah.
I just think it would be good for the kids too, because I see like significant disadvantages for the kids coming from. Our community not having access to a field or a track or.
Something proud of.
Like something they can be proud of, and then something like as they're feeding into regetti, like. The kids that are growing up in Orca have so many more advantages, just because they have Saint Joe's with a beautiful track there, regetti with a beautiful track. And then um you know, you have the barrier of we're so far away, but I just think it would be. Something that could at least level the playing field, and then I think you can even make the narrative to say that like. If we give the kids in our community the right tools, they need to be successful, like it's gonna give them opportunities potentially for. College or other things that are gonna help them in their life, so we're talking about a track, but I'm thinking like.
Cause like, they go to school and they see this big track. And they see all this and then they don't know that they can run that, that they are, then they find out they're a runner. Cause they done it a long time ago.
Or even practicing wise, cause there's not anywhere for them really to practice, I mean, there's open space, but that's not the same as having like an actual. Nice facility to practice at.
Especially with gophers, now, you you guys practice on that here? Have you had any major injuries with kids?
We get, we get sprained ankles all the time, you know, just like, we're just careful. We try to, you know, spike a hole, try to get some sap or some sand on it. It's a never ending battle, you know, like last year we had a, I think it was five yards of sand. And barely made damn to, you know, cover all the holes, you know, it's still, just, you know.
Ongoing.
Like I said, you know, being out there and then, you know, then you hear all the complaints from the, when people come to pay us, they don't wanna come out, they don't, they don't wanna come to Walleye.
For that reason? Their cheerleaders just up and do their acrobats and stuff out there.
Imagine really full speed on that.
You know, and I, I think it's used to soccer fields, right?
Well, they, not as much, they actually, because they don't like it, because of that reason.
Yeah, but if it was turf, they could use it.
That's why they have been ruining the front of Leeward Park's grass, because Leeward Park's grass is nice and perfect right now. And so they don't want to go play at O'Connell, they want to play here. Which is very frustrating, cause we don't have a park ranger to enforce them to not be there, so I either have to stay here all the, all day or.
I've seen them come and come to basketball there at their bay.
Yeah, there's always.
Sit there and watch for a little while.
Cause there, the grass is. So messed up right now, and if they keep playing on it, Juan has been out there putting seed, putting fertilizer, making sure that the water is. Right where it needs to be, but it doesn't matter, because they keep ruining it. No, we put um. Oh, what is that called? Why can't I think of?
Yeah, yeah, you have to block it off.
We put caution tape out there and I think there's like two sign, I don't know, they might have blown away by now. Um, that said, please do not play on the grass, but I. We went out there today and I'll probably have to replace them tomorrow, cause I didn't see the signs and the. The tape was like ripped at a couple different spots, so I think they just, either it was the wind or they were just like, nah, I'm just gonna go in. I know.
I must say, the gophers around here are no joke.
I killed a lot of gophers, yeah.
That's all the mayor talks about all the time.
They're like a special species.
Honestly, I've worked with this and anything I could get to help, you know, in terms of writing or whatever, you know.
I definitely, it's not only the city council, but the, but the, but the city itself would definitely love this.
Oh, yeah, exactly, sure, sure. Who wouldn't want that?
I'd be ready, you've been, you've been talking about for years, you know, for me, it was that kinda like a, just a, you know, fantasy, oh, that would be great, what a dream.
But you know, there's a lot of wealthy ranchers around here too, that, you know, would present it right, we could hit their pockets as well, you know. I think if anything, we could try even look, getting lighting for that area too.
Oh my gosh, imagine?
That's what I really want, it's like, I want lighting, I want stadium, I want turf, like. I think we can do it, like I have a, I think there's.
You have a dream.
And then Poclorico will come and be the halftime show in the middle of the field.
Now, I think.
So much potential.
No, yes.
I think really, so what I wanted to do by bringing it forward was like, I really enjoyed the rec meeting that we had, the two days, I thought it was really good. Um but the one thing that I thought was like, not necessarily missing from it, but something that I'm like, this is that next step, is like setting. A a smart goal, like what is specific, what's measurable, what's actionable, what are our results and what are our timeline, like that's what I wanna do. So what I would like to do is propose that we bring this to city council, I can put together like a very rough proposal. On what it would look like and kinda speak through, you know, how would it benefit the city, how would it benefit the kids? And how I would like address getting the funding on it. And I can um run those cost estimates, just to give them a rough idea. And then if we can get the city to sign off, like in the next month, I am gonna be gone next week, but um when I get back from DC, I can start working on it. And then um the next step would be going to Los Amigos and seeing if they'd be willing um to work with. Um me specifically, like um I can show them some of the products I do for my day job, hopefully they'd be like, yes, you know, you're competent enough. We'll agree to work with you, um if not, we might be back. If not, we might actually square one.
I'm still attached to a nonprofit that has lots of money, you know, they have horrible housing and. They'd be willing to give for that too, but I'm also thinking about the casino. Cause I know in Fresno, there's um. Tennessee and man, they get a little ballpark there.
Cause isn't this, isn't part of this area at Schumer or no? Cause I thought I've heard Christina Hernandez say that before.
Okay, I mean, that's something that we could pursue as well, and then they.
Cause they do lots of money, they have some minds on.
Uh I mean, I think there's a lot of areas that we could go after uh to make this a reality, you know, it sounds great. But the question is get the buy-in from the nonprofit, but you know, you're not successful with them, I'm sure we can help.
I mean, whatever the city is okay with, Los Amigos is gonna be okay with, cause that's how they basically, who they get their marching orders from.
I'm com- I'm confident the city council will, you know, be excited about this.
I mean, what's not to be excited about?
Maybe it's present, maybe it could be the meeting.
I mean, there's so many, cause who's on, Christina's on the council and her, does her son play football or not?
He plays football.
So she's has some awareness of that, and then there's Megan Wazali.
Megan, they're jeans.
Jeans.
These would play boys' game.
Mayor hates the gophers out there, so.
Oh, yeah, are there any uh professional athletes that came out of Waterbury that played, say, professional ball or any?
Um, I know Megan's dad, I don't know if he played. Yeah, I don't know if he played professional, but I know he went to Gonzaga and played.
But I'm seeing, seeing if there's anybody still attached here, maybe your big team or anything.
I mean, you named the part, I don't know if you renamed the part, but you know what I mean, consider that.
Well, you could, you could give the park the same name, but it goes, it goes, the stadium in South could be something else.
And I mean, we could even look at something like, you know, one grant is going after the turf.
Yeah.
Ones go, like, I think there's a lot of funding streams that if we were able to get, yes, then he's gonna support giving us the land, so to speak. For it, the concept could be created. For it, the concept could be created, but I just think it's a really good thing for the kids. I think it's good for the community, because I think that was the other thing that kind of came out of the rec meeting was that. People want the community to prosper, but they don't want it to grow. Like that was one of the things is like um. And so being able to increase our revenue stream by like people coming to an event like that and then patronizing the restaurants and stuff. I think would be really helpful and then go um. Cause then it's gonna take time and you know, getting the mindset to shift, like we wanna develop a city that's gonna be sustainable for the future, but. Future generations, so our kids don't have to leave.
I was listening to Enrique, mm, in her lifetime, that would be fantastic.
That happened, put it into the world, existence.
But you know, but in my experience in grant writing for something like this is that, yeah, I think if you can get some seed money to start and then. A funder will look, well, they they got something to start and you know, let's 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 help with that, buying the seed money, that's you know, maybe. Maybe two hundred, a hundred thousand.
Tires around the ranch or just stuff like that.
Yeah, and that's how we can get it, cause if they hear something good like that, they're proposing. We already have commitments from so many, you know. Or you're just doing some type of fundraiser, I don't know, just to get it launched, but the rendition is gonna be important. Your brush is painted out.
Now I got it up here, it's all in my mind, but I think that like the one thing that's really important with rec in a community like ours is that. Um at least from, you know, a lot of the people I've worked with and even I grew up in a town really similar to Guadalupe, but in Oregon and. Um the one thing that I just feel like it's that playing field that kids get to be kids, because a lot of the kids, especially first generation, like. They're serving as translators, they're serving as babysitters, advocates, so many things that like when you have recreation. It's that one opportunity that kids just get to be kids out there on the field and I think that that's something that like. We really can, you know, play up in our narrative for like people donating money to this causes like. We have a community where kids just don't really get to be kids a lot of times until they're out there on the field and stuff, so. I think that it's just something that to consider, like why it's so important to our community here.
Another thought is that the cannabis um. Uh businesses that are coming in are supposed to provide. Um I forget what the term is. And I know when they presented, both of them had the Guadalupe football logo on there, so.
I've actually talked to them, talked to them about this, uh I wanna fix our field, you know, more than. You know, we gotta, we we we're raising that money for equipment and all that, but the field is. Well, it's a dire need.
Our agency wrote a letter to Adam, root one, is he root one, Adam? In Austin, well, anyway, so they they're they owe me.
Where are the dispensaries on coming in?
Um I know one of them is where um Lupe's Lupe Alvarez used to own. It's like the one that I I I have no idea, yeah, yeah, the two story one with the gate. Yeah, so that is one of them and then I think there's another one on a bis, is it on Bispo or no?
There's something going in next to the wine bar.
Oh, maybe it is.
How soon are they opening though?
Uh I would have to ask, I'll have to ask Todd and then um. Cause I know one of them was supposed to um clear their the land, like the lot already, and I think they did. But I think there might three, I thought only two of them were approved, but I'll have to double check with Todd. But I think there might be three of them, cause I know that.
They approved three, but two are are.
Are for.
Cause isn't that one for growing or something?
Well, that's that uh the, yeah, yeah, storage on the bispo, that's what you're thinking of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
Be higher and so folks too. Yeah, no, that's that's another funding stream.
So for this grant, what timeline do we wanna work to try to get in front of city council?
I I'd say sometime in June, cause I'm gonna be on vacation the week of the. Fifteenth, I think it is, I'll be gone that week um. And you have to have all your agenda, all the agenda has to be finalized by. I think it's like the Thursday before or something like that, so I don't think I'll have a whole lot of time to get that together or. I know you're the one that's doing it, but like to get it submitted that quickly, um I'd say probably like. Either first meeting in June or second meeting in June, it depends on.
I am gonna be gone in June, so. Early, we might have to wait till or when is their first meeting in?
It's always the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. City council, no, city council is twice a month. It's a every second and fourth Friday or Tuesday of the month.
If I could get organized by May, would you be willing to look at that one?
Yeah.
Be the twenty third. I have a long flight back east next week, I have nothing but like six hours of time.
Wait, you're saying the May twenty third meeting?
Yeah.
That's the one that I don't think that I would be prepared for.
Let's see, then we'd have to move to July then.
I think July would be better, but I'm just thinking in terms of what are you gonna present, just the the idea, the concept, or are you gonna?
I was mostly just gonna put together like a very rough estimate of like, why is this important? What buy-in do we need from the city and then what kind of, I have a couple renderings of like what Long Hope looks like, what War Memorial looks like. A couple other like comparable cities um that have done similar and then a very like rough cost estimate is what I would. I mean, I could.
My thinking is that if they have visuals. I think it'll be easier buy-in, so if you can take pictures and say.
Subscribe to something, so this is, this is what it could be.
Were you thinking of presenting this um as? The Bulldogs or as commission or have you?
No, not as Bulldogs, cause I I think that like, if we're gonna get buy-in, I think the big thing is like equal equity of multiple people from the city. So I would do it either as a private citizen or as a commission member and like just. So if it, once it all comes to fruition, that it doesn't have um like. Just where it's more neutral, I guess, so.
Let me, I'll ask um Juana how that works, cause I'm sure that you can do it as a commissioner, but I'm just not. I don't know how that how it works, cause I don't know if it might have to be. Us, like my staff report. Um let me ask her and then I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know, I could do the twenty third if we were able to get organized by then, but if not, I would, I could do July, but I'm gonna be out for quite a bit of June.
Okay.
And then to that initial, like the objective of that initial presentation would just be to get the city to say that. If we were to secure funding, they would be willing to allow the grass to go to turf.
Like a conditional buy-in.
Cause I think that that'll be the um next step from Los Amigos is saying. Yes, the city would agree to it if we got the money. If I, if we need to go a different route though, just let me know, cause I don't. I don't know a lot about.
I'll ask her tomorrow and then see um what she says.
I just have a vision of a field one day.
Feel the dreams.
If you build it, they will come.
Yes.
We're still say that too, may or say that.
So see what they say, let me know Hannah, and then just whenever I present, if you guys wanna be um present.
Oh, yes.
I would appreciate it, but. I can do the math, I can do the visuals, but I don't know a lot about football or anything.
We'll bring the kids. Take around your ankles. That's rough.
Let's move to item number eight, renaming of Central Park.
Okay, so um not only do we need to figure out. I would say um we should come up with like three name ideas, just so that I can present that to council and say, okay. You guys can pick out of these three, um but we also need to um. Decide what the criteria is gonna be for each year, what is gonna be the required. List to be able to nominate somebody.
You know, I just brought it up as an idea last time, do we have to all agree on this? I don't know, yeah, I just, I present it as an idea.
I mean, I agree, I think it's a good idea.
We have to as a commission to say, you know, let's see.
We can vote on it if you guys wanna vote on it.
Women or women.
Individuals.
What do you mean?
Was it, was it for the park or something?
Yes.
Well, okay.
But then we were talking about naming it like. Las Mujeres or something like that.
Peters Park, something like that, so it would honor all the women.
Yeah.
And then we talked about how annually we would pick somebody to add to, I don't know, whatever, a wall. Fame and such of sorts. But that was just kind of an idea I threw out there, but I don't know if everybody.
I like it, I think it's good, it's broad, it's.
I like it, just that I just wanna make sure there's the, but there is, at least maybe there might be one lady, maybe deserves it. There is a lady that deserves that, that I think that the part named after her, I don't know if there is, but.
Like I mentioned, I think we got so many names. Yeah, I I, you know, I don't know them that well, just maybe and. And to be quite honest, none of them really stood out for me to say, wow, this is, you know, loving beyond, you know. But that being said, I haven't heard, I'm sure there's some more out there.
I agree with you, just because I think that everybody is gonna have a different idea of who is the most valuable. Woman that's come out of Guadalupe. So I think that's a better idea, cause it still allows everybody the opportunity to add somebody if that they think that that person deserves to.
I think maybe like the grand opening or something is like, so we have the name like the Las Mujeres. And then maybe we did like some honorary, like you could even do like a walk on the park of like lawn signs that have like a person and their story or. You know, like it could be something though, all the people, cause everybody like they were, they've been long-term residents, like is, are you more valuable?
That's what I was worried about.
Then we have a lot of people that have not been here for a long time and come from different countries that will not know anybody that we're talking about.
Yeah, so I mean, I like it broad and then maybe at the grand opening honoring a. Group of specific people is like kind of our kickoff, past, present, future.
I read somewhere where there was a group of women, this was years ago. I don't know how many years ago, my memory fades, but they were very instrumental in going up. Up against the school district, uh Cleveland's district. And because of the mistreatment of Latino kid, make make kind of.
Los Diaz de Guadalupe, that's.
I mean, I don't know if it's too political, I'm just saying.
Unhistorical, you know, the story.
I don't, I don't, I just, I just, I just read it, like, I don't know, you know what I mean? But that that it's.
Yeah, I imagine it is, because it's very political, right, and I don't know if we wanna go that route, but you know, something like that, you know, it's a cool story.
But I encourage people, I I'd like to read it again, I didn't, I didn't. Okay, okay, cause yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go in a direction that, you know. People boycotting the park, you know.
I like broad and I think I had mentioned last time, like there's only a handful of parks in the state of California named after women. There's only one other one in Santa Barbara County and it isn't really a park, it's like kind of an abandoned lot.
I think it's a cool idea, cause it's unique, I don't think I've I've ever been to a park that has that element.
And then part of that, there's some, we're not gonna use it artwork, correct?
I'm gonna take one home with me today.
There you go. So that would, yes, and then had the Peters Park and then just.
I'll have to see what um the artwork actually is, I don't know if there, cause I think it's like two sculpture spots. And I know that there's a wall, so we could potentially put it on the wall and what we could do. For like the first woman, maybe we could do like multiple people and then have their. But that might be something that we would wanna have the public vote on, um especially if it becomes a mural.
But I think if you just keep the mural, there's nothing with women and gender and then they.
Oh, just they, yeah, okay.
Like I was really imagining.
If it resembles anybody, it's just.
No capicino, you know.
Different areas.
Yeah, the teacher, police officer.
Different, different capacity.
He can have a picture of you in different outfits.
Oh, gosh. I think they would have a riot if I was the first person on the wall, I feel like she doesn't even live here.
There's a female mayor.
Yes, there has, uh Francis, how how far back was she, like three?
Ten years ago, imagine.
There's some lady that's on the wall above the piano there, I don't know who she is.
Yes, yeah, you know, but I I think that's general idea, right? With that, I think if I. But yeah, I like that. We just gotta be careful, like you said. How we approach this, you know, people could get real sensitive about that stuff.
Even doing anything for a female, that gets a little, yeah, some people have views that they don't.
I briefly brought it up at the city council meeting and everybody seemed like they were on board, so. I think especially cause with having Christina and um Megan both on the council now, they were both like, yeah, and then everybody else was like, okay.
When I think for criteria going forward, it would just have to be, um you know, whatever the criteria is and then decide like. Do we wanna have a committee like that every year we like solicit, starting in. Uh January, so that would give us an opportunity to review in February and then or and vote in February. And then by Women's History Month in March, and then would that be something that as a commission, that could be our voting responsibility? But we would put it out to the public that we need, you know, a name of a person that's. A nomination.
I would say. Should we have it where they nominate and then we do like a public poll?
I might poll, but then it also becomes a popularity contest sometimes, like if you're more like.
That's true.
I don't know, if, I mean, maybe you have a huge family and you get a lot of votes, but like, maybe if we have like a scoring matrix as a commission. And then we read them and then vote based on like.
There you go, depending on the criteria that we have. So you'd have like minimal qualifications, if you will, and if they meet those, then, you know.
So do you want me to, cause this is gonna be a staff report that I present to council. Um do you want me to just focus on the renaming aspect and. Nominating a new person every year and then after if they approve it, then we come up with a criteria?
I think so, cause there's probably gonna be a lot of into the weeds, like, does the person have to live here? Or could it be a school teacher or something that contributes, like there's a lot of things we'll have to flush out. That, I don't know, let's see if they'll approve it.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, and their pocketbook.
Okay, so let's.
Put anybody's name on my plaque out of a turf field.
So let's shift gears then to names, cause I wanna give them more than one option.
You heard mine.
So Las Mujeres is one.
Number two, you can do it in English.
And do you want it, do we want it? Do we want Las Mujeres Park or Parque or Park? Okay, so that's one. What's another lady, general ladies? That's harder.
Like Los Mujeres de Guadalupe or do, is that too long or I like the flow of the first part, but I don't think we should. Do like an English Spanish combination. It needs to stay all Spanish.
What's another word for park? Are they called parks in Mexico? Wonder World Plaza? Kind of like a central place.
But I mean, we already have a memorial plaza, so I don't know if that would start to get confusing. People already confuse that and that's all all the time, so. At this point, I just need.
Yeah.
Another one.
Roll the women.
Let's do an English one. That one, that's gonna be harder, I feel like, um.
The girls' park.
The Golden Girls. No, cuz then that's too specific. If there's like a female that is not a mother. We're live, Joe.
Yes, I saw.
I really like the, I really like the original, like short.
If they have an addition.
If they have a recommendation, that's not what we're asking, then.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, if they have a better idea, then. Open to it, open to it, this other ideas.
But I prefer the first.
I'll, I'll frame it to say this was the preferred.
It makes sense. After you say this, it doesn't make sense. Right, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm good on that unless you guys have any other thoughts or questions.
No, I think we've covered that for you. I have number nine. Arts, sculptures.
So what do we want to do with the art sculptures that are in the courtyard?
Don't need somebody else. Can you rap on that?
Can we what? If the ones that are metal, I know we could take. And get money for them, but.
There's still a place for those. We still haven't found it yet.
I still like them.
Me too.
I kinda like them there, honestly, but.
Rika gave them to me already.
But I know another place.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't say all of them cuz we could leave a majority of them here. They, they're not impeding anything. They're nice to look at when you're just sitting out there. But maybe there's like one or two that we could move somewhere else, but I just don't know where.
There's, yeah, there was, there was, there was a lot. We might have to table this one.
Table, okay.
Home to be determined. But if one goes missing, we know where it's at.
No, that's the only person that's gonna steal one. Except I might have Spock in my living room later.
But didn't he get his?
It's just like his. It's like a bust basically, but. Yeah, he's seven arm. It's gone now. I am so excited for this cuz we have a lot of vendors. I think last year. All I had was like three food, food trucks. And maybe like five vendors and it was all just the people that are nonprofits from here. Um, this time we have nineteen vendors. And we have three food truck, or we have two food trucks and then Lobo Butcher Shop is gonna come and barbecue from the pits that are at Leroy. We have the outdoor restroom, so we don't need porta potties. Uh, Boys and Girls Club is going to staff the inside of the building. Um, because we have to use the inside rooms to allow the performers to change in between their songs. Uh, so the indoor restrooms will also be open.
So it's gonna be indoor and outdoor or?
It's just outdoor, so indoor is more just for the performers, so we'll put on the door. Um, event, yeah. And they're not gonna have someone just sitting in there the whole time. Basically what we. Worked out is that they wanna provide a booth anyway. So their booth is gonna be like right at the door, so they'll still be able to see all the activity of who's going in and out cuz we'll only have the, the front doors open. I lost my train of thought. I don't know what I was saying.
Vendors?
Oh, vendors, yes. Um, so we have, I think. One, two, wait, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have s- eight vendors that are selling things. Um, which honestly I think is the biggest draw cuz I think. Food is a big draw, but if that's all there is, you eat and then you go home. But if you have vendors that are actually selling things and you can go look at whatever they have and then buy some things. That's nice, but then we also have a lot of um resources for the community, so Hancock's coming out. Um, Friends of Guadalupe Library are going to um. Provide books that the kids can take and I think they're providing them for free if I'm not mistaken. The children's resource for Santa Barbara, I think it's Santa Barbara County. Um, will be here. Capsule will be there. Um, Kiwanis Club is gonna be there promoting the Guadalupe um Elks Rodeo Candidate. Fire, uh, Guarda Fire will be there, so they'll have the, um. What is that called? Yeah, whatever it's called, whatever they call it. And then they're also gonna bring the old, um, the old school. Fire truck for the kids just to take pictures or whatever. I think. My pop will be there, which is nice for the McSteco community. Uh, Dune Center will be there. There's some other people, but it's just.
Other organizations were. Bringing, well, I think I have a lot of giveaways, but you know, for the high school equivalency program for farm workers.
I did not.
Uh, after this.
Okay. Okay. Bulldogs will be there. T-Mobile, which was really random because I didn't ask them. They asked me, hey, can we come and bring somebody? And I was like, yeah, sure, whatever. So, uh, Julian, Julianne Hill from, um. What is the produce company that is right here? Yeah, Taylor Farms. So they're going to donate um two cases of water and veggie trays for all their performers. Um, and then Lobo and um Nena's Kitchen are both gonna partner to provide all the performers meals. So that's nice, um.
Get free?
The, we'll have a stage. Trying to think if there's anything else that I'm missing. We have a P system. The mayor is gonna um say a few words at the beginning, kinda to start it out.
Sorry, is this on Sunday?
Yes. Um, I think that's pretty much it. Uh, we have a lineup of performers basically like for the whole time, except for like the first hour. But I did that on purpose because last year when we did it. The, our dance group danced like right at the beginning and there was no one there. And people started showing up like two hours later and then we were like, oh, we should just wait it, but, um. Hmm, I think that's it unless you guys have anything else.
You know, I was at the Strawberry Festival. I noticed two things. One is that the food was incredibly expensive. I don't know if that's.
I think that's just fair. They always do that. I've been in four H and FFA my whole life and. Every time we went, it's always like that. They, that's just.
Just thinking, how could a family, cuz you know, me and my wife, when we just bought. Like thirty bucks for. But I, I can't see a farm worker family, you know, going to take their kids to that. Hundred fifty, two hundred bucks later purchase, but I don't know. I don't think you can regulate what they charge because this. But I don't know if they're, if they're gouging or what.
I know when we did Lobo for Bulldogs, um, those sandwiches were priced for pretty reasonably. Wasn't he charging like twelve dollars for? A really nice sandwich, like two kids could split it.
Yeah, yeah. But I, but I, I mean, it's just situation everywhere. Just kinda like a drink, but it's four bucks.
Like people sneak their stuff in now.
This weekend I went to a monster truck show and then I sold my. And all we bought was two hot dogs. Soda and chips. It was seven dollars.
Was it served in a gold cup? It was twenty percent turkey meat.
Or byproducts, yeah.
Well, good job Hannah, getting all those vendors. Get out and.
I think every year, but like T-Mobile, right? I think Toyota was over there. There was another phone. I mean, they're out there because they're trying to advertise, but they give a lot of free stuff away, right? Which is good.
Yeah.
Free stuff, right? Um, but I mean, that's kinda like, you might wanna reach out. I didn't, I said, maybe not this year, but next year.
I would say. I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. I'm sorry, um. We're trying to do the salsa festival and we're trying to decide if we wanna do it in August or September. I think weather here is okay enough to do it in September still. So, and we were thinking of calling it like. Salsa September, like something with like the two S's. Um, but that's a great idea for that and that's actually what I was thinking is. To reach out to like Xfinity, like the random, whatever, just to see if they'll come out.
Companies, all these, and they give a lot of freebies away. And how many performers are there?
Uh, it's just three, but each one is like an hour cuz we're an hour. We're, uh, Reggani Marimba is gonna be here too. And then uh, we'll have an Aztec dancing group too, so.
And these are all, not all free, right?
None of them charged, which is nice.
I'm just like, for the future, I think, cuz next year, if we ever have money, it's so fun, maybe we get some kinda top performing up.
Yeah.
We wouldn't pay for it, to bring people in.
So this year and last year, I don't, I haven't been charging vendors just because we didn't have any vendors, so it's just more to like create the. Connection and the relationship.
Right.
Um, but next year, I did start telling people this year, there's no charge this year, but there will be next year, so please keep that in mind. Um, and that, the reason why I'm saying that is cuz that would be what we would use to get a performer. Cuz we did ask, um, we were looking at a couple mariachi groups, we were looking at a couple singers, but they all are charging like. Four hundred dollars for like an hour.
Yeah.
So, um. Next year, either next year or for the salsa festival, I definitely will try to see if we can get sponsorship if anything.
There you go.
Um, I just need to see logistically how that works with the city. If I can do that or not, I think I should be able to. But yeah, that, that's a big draw too.
Construct a park.
Like the Downtown Fridays? I honestly don't know. I'll have to connect with whoever the. Event coordinator is for that. Because I know that they pay them cuz even when we perform for our dance group, we only get like fifty bucks, but we still get paid too, so. I'll have to ask, um, I think I actually have.
I think they do sponsorship, like on their um advertisement and stuff, there's um sponsored logos on there, so they must have some agreement.
I just don't know if that's different cuz I don't think Downtown Fridays, most of like the farmer's market type things are not actually run. Through the city. It's like through a separate entity, so I don't know.
I'm thinking concerts in the park is the one I'm thinking of, is the summer concert series. But I know on their flyers, there's always logos on the bottom of who's sponsoring, but I don't know how to work that.
Yeah, I'll ask.
But you know, one of the things, Hannah, is that. Bring people back or vendors next year and charge it. Turnout is gonna be important this year, right? They don't see anybody there.
And that was one of the issues that I had with um two of the food trucks cuz one of them is, um. The Birria Boys and then the other one is Crave Box and they both have like a huge following. And I tried to get both of them out there, but because not. Birria Brothers have never been or Boys have never been out here, but Crave Box was here last year for Single the Mile and there was nobody here. So I'm sure that this year when I asked, they were probably like, I don't really wanna do that. Cuz they get way more business. They um posted up on like Broadway, I think, in Santa Maria, so they always get a ton of business out there.
But last year it was cold and there was that drunk driver that took out like my car ten minutes before the event started, so it was kinda outside your.
But I think the car wreck actually brought more people, which sad.
Turn here, turn here.
I'll do it. As long as it's soft, I'll just bump somebody on accident.
Well, we'll keep posting, get the word out.
That's something good. I have number eleven. June Recreation Park Newsletter Editions.
That is for you guys to tell me if you want things added.
That's what I'm all involved still. I hope I survive, uh, not involved this weekend. Last time I couldn't get up the next day.
Hopefully Trevor comes because I cannot be there on Saturday, so.
Hopefully not try to retrieve all the balls, like.
You just need to just, just sit down, just relax. I texted everybody yesterday on purpose.
He even funded it.
I know, he put a thumbs up. Trevor, if you're listening, we're waiting for you.
I'll be calling him again. But yeah, I guess I got those, we got those history.
Do you guys have any um updated stuff for Bulldogs or is it just the same one?
Did I send you the one coaches wanted?
I think you only sent me the English one.
Okay, I'll send you the Spanish one too cuz we still, uh, for cheer, definitely football, you guys still need some assistant coaches, right? Or are you good?
I keep it open cuz, you know.
I'll send you that, so if you could add that to June, that would be awesome.
And then if there's ever anything that you guys see, even if it's not here, but it's like an educational type of thing for the kids here. I'll post that too. Christina has been sending me a lot of stuff. So I've been posting that on um Facebook and Instagram, but I can include it in the, the newsletter too. They just have that one flyer that is for their signups, but they haven't sent me any new stuff. I'm sure they'll have some stuff for summer once they start.
Training, speed training.
Oh, yeah, the speed training flyer, but they are.
I'll have to ask them for that cuz I don't think they.
Is the library doing anything for like summer reading over there?
I don't know, um, let me ask.
What about Little House? Are they doing any like parenting um classes or anything for the summer?
Um, I actually will forward you guys a message that um Mideya sent me today. It's for the, the. It's like a book. Reading, I think it's called a festival. I think it's a book reading festival. And I believe that the community changers are the ones that are putting it on and they want a Wreckin Parks um booth there. I think it's, uh, I was gonna ask you if you wanted to go with me. I think it's June, I mean, any of you guys can go, but. Um, June eleventh, I think. I'll, I'll have to um let you know what the exact date is. Um, and basically what she said, it, all it is, she used the Dune Center as a, um. In, an example, they brought. Whatever your book is, you have to tie it into like what your service is. So Dune Center brought a book about like pollution, but it was like a kid's illustrated book, so ours would be like. Something about sports, I don't know, something about being outside, maybe. Oh, I know, I have to go on Google later, see if I can find something. That's it, I do need to start reaching out to her more though, cuz I know that they have a lot of stuff going on. I'm thinking if there's anything else. I mean, we can, I, I don't see why not, I.
Oh, the rodeo queen, win the rodeo, is that coming up? Might be worth seeing if the Kiwanis, cuz I know they have a calendar that has all the Kiwana. Events on it, but I saw that they just canceled the, was it Menudo or something?
But I talked to them that day and they said, oh, we're still having it.
Not according to social media.
Yes, I called them right after that, cuz no, we're, we're, we're sold out already, cuz I wondered, cuz the ticket says sold out. Part of it. And you don't see the eight o'clock, so no, no, we're gonna be selling till we sell, sell out. Would you? Yesterday, right after I saw this thing on social media. That's why I called them.
Who'd you talk to? I don't know.
Like they didn't know about it. Do you have anything for bikes or tools, bicycles around, for anything? Bike companies or something? When we do anything in town, like we had the easy bike here before. No, this, this like advertised for bikes or, or they had the, the easy bikes here last time for the, the.
All for the. Are you talking about, um, at the Leroy grand opening? I think that's when they were here or something.
No, it's here in the plaza. Couple people tried up, you could try it down the street, oh, yeah. I'll wait till later. Yeah, that was, that was pretty cool.
I think they have actually, now that you bring that up. I thought Shannon mentioned something about it to me, let me ask her. Anything else for newsletter? And you guys can always, um. Just, if you think of something, you can always send it to me whenever. And even if you miss the, the deadline for the newsletter, I can always just post it individually, so just let me know.
Thank you.
How's the feedback been on your um, Facebook page? Has it been going pretty well?
Yeah, I got like, I think I have like two hundred, or no, it might not be two hundred right now, probably like one seventy, but it's only been like. Not even a month, like maybe a couple weeks, so that's been nice, and then. We've got a lot of feedback, um, a lot of shares, a lot of comments. Which the comments are not always positive, but that's okay.
What do people say, like, how can you be negative? Well, that's good, I mean, even, I mean, reaching almost two hundred people in less than a month, and if they share it, that's good.
Be nice if people are watching us at home right now.
Like us on Facebook.
Oh, um, I did actually, for June, um, utility bill insert. We have the, follow us on Instagram, follow us on um, Facebook, so hopefully that'll help to get more people. To start following us, and then what I'll start doing is, um, the day of our meetings, I'll post. Like, we have a meeting tonight, here's the link, if you wanna watch on YouTube or come join us in person.
Recreation's for you. Welcome ideas. And there's plenty of room every meeting also. Let's move on to item number twelve, other matters of importance that Recreation Service Manager will discuss in being necessary.
So the city council, or not even city council, the mayor and um, the city administrator. Would like us to put together the um, facility fee workshop, so the joint meeting for that. So they asked me to ask you all to provide some dates, that would be a good day to meet, and then, um. At next Tuesday's meeting, um, Todd will go ahead and ask city council. Which of those dates works for them to meet? If you have a general idea of some dates, that would be nice, um, if not, I would say just email me by. Or I could start an email thread with all of us in it tomorrow, and then we can just start throwing out some.
I'm pretty flexible. I hope I am.
What's the one day that we all agree on? Um, there's something else, what was it? Oh, I can always bring this back as like an actual agenda item with some more information, but it was just something that I was um, thinking about today. We've had to borrow P A systems from basically anyone that has one, because we don't have one. Um, we haven't really touched the ARPA money that much, and after, uh, we had our meeting about. Using the ARPA money for the floor, I went and talked to finance and we ended up pulling that from general fund, because it is, it's just. Wear and tear, it's not specifically parks and rec. So we still have like a good chunk of money, that, um, I think there was like three or four P A systems that I saw. That were under like three hundred dollars, I think it was like two fifty-one, and it's like two. Um, big speakers that come on the stands and it comes with like a microphone and. The remote that you can change things from far away. Um, I can always, if you guys do wanna see like specifically what I'm talking about, I can bring a couple, so that way you can decide which one. Or not test them, I'm saying like, look at prices and just see like what all it includes. Um, and I'm not in a rush, cuz we already have a P A system for this Sunday, so I'm not worried about it, but.
You said the price, what did you say the price was?
Under three hundred, it was like, there was one that was like two fifty-one. Amazon.
Are they that cheap now?
It depends on how. Nice you want it. If you guys want a nicer one, I can. That's true.
Yeah, cuz if you're, you know, doing something in the gymnasium, nobody can hear you in the back, what's the purpose, you know, you got something that projects, yeah.
I can, um, send links to Garrett and ask him what he thinks his best recommendation is.
Here's something that'll last, but our vote will be gone at some point.
That is true.
The one that they were using without the Kiwanis.
Which one?
There was one they use for stuff here. That had, um. Cassette sent it to, and the CDs and everything. For all kinds of different things, I don't know, maybe with the Kiwanis.
I have not seen that, I don't, if we have it, I don't know where it is.
Where'd the one come from, from the rec, for the rec meeting, was that the Ramirez family brought that, or?
The rec meeting.
Yeah, that was a good one.
I don't know who that was actually. Garrett donated one, but it's not good. Thank you, Garrett, we appreciate you. Um, I mean, it's not that it's not good, but it's just older, and I think. We get what we pay for, I think we should just get one that is ours that we bought. That is nice, that we have all the pieces for, cuz that's the other aspect of him donating it. It was just the actual speaker, so all the like plugins and stuff, I don't even know where to find those, so.
They just opened the Guitar World, I'll be willing to go down there and ask if they donate one and. You know, and price, you know, and it won't hurt.
Definitely think that it's like having a good P A system make or breaks an event, because there's nothing worse than going and then, you know, someone just like. And then, new technology is lighter weight, compatible with phone, Bluetooth enabled.
That's the, the best part about it, that all of them I was looking at, I made sure that there was Bluetooth on it, because that's the hardest part, especially. With stuff like this, where you have other groups coming in that are gonna use the P A system. Having to figure out, okay, what, what adapter do you need, what, how, oh my gosh, it's so frustrating.
Well, I'm in favor of finding something that is gonna work for you. Don't worry about finding cheap, find what's gonna meet your needs and that you think is gonna last.
Somewhere you could store it too, without having problems with.
Probably, yeah, just in the office probably. I don't think it'll, most of them look like they're, even like the more expensive ones, look like they're easy to like break down into.
But I think we're all in favor of that.
Okay, sure.
We want turf and we want music.
And the water tower.
Yes, the water tower.
Yes, I hope things keep moving. Um, commission requests, comments, and meeting reports.
Same as last time, I'm just gonna be gone in the month of June, so hopefully you guys will be here, or hopefully Trevor will show up. So we'll have enough.
We, you didn't get a chance to talk to. Well, I don't know, you know, that's something I'd love to have her here, but man, he's youth, he's got ideas. I mean, is there something that we can do or should do, I don't know.
I just don't want to. Tell him like, oh, well, you haven't been to any of these meetings, so we, we're gonna find somebody else, cuz I think he does, like you said, he has a good perspective. But.
The only thing I worry about is that like he is taking up a seat, and so like, you know, for June, like if. So one of you guys were gone, then we would have to cancel the meeting altogether, so like. We could maybe, you know, we could keep his perspective as like if he wanted to be involved as, just like a, a public individual that's attending the meetings. To help offer viewpoints and perspective, but I, like. We've all been really reliable about not missing, but if it ever got to a point where like one of us was gone or two of us were gone. Then we'd be without the ability.
I agree, at, at some point we have to make a decision, you know, say, let's move on and.
I would say Joe, this is your last.
To replace him, then we would look for somebody that has that perspective as well, right? Recreation.
Willing to attend.
I guess if, uh, we're at item number fourteen, not sure if you wanna do this, but I'm ready for a motion of adjournment. Much as maybe need a second.
Oh, second?
Motion a second all in the favor of adjournment of this meeting, signify by saying aye.